You expect us to leave that?
That's Jane. All right. Many of you folks got it, they all asleep. Hello. All right, everybody here and everybody ready? Okay? Okay, I'm sorry.
I had to say leave.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I'll be in the order please. Welcome our guests. Let's get started with, um... Shane, please play the lead please.
I play the lead.
I play the flag. I'm the United States commander. And through the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a justice for all.
I tell you what Shane, you did just good job and pray for the best for us.
Thank you. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much God for the state that you've given us. We thank you for your love, God that you show us each day, or how you take care of us, Father. We thank you for the ability, God, that we have to serve our community as councilmen, councilwomen, God, and we worship with our mayor. And God have us to be, uh, be very wise and have understanding, uh, for what you have us to do, in the direction we have our seed to go in. And God have us most of all, we give you credit for what happens in our seed, Lord, not take it upon ourselves, we pat ourselves on the back, God, but you give the glory to you, the honor to you for all that you do for us. And we just thank you for that, God, for being just nice. And just name it prayer, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Shane. Uh, we gonna get started with the... We have our audit that has just been completed. And Amy, I'm gonna get you and Leanne to come forward. And I know, shout out that you get down here and let y'all do this first, because it looks like it's gonna be a storm tonight. Y'all jump forward. Is it bad fun enough? I don't know what's wrong with none of them.
Well, my raise is probably I'll take this off, please, and say, uh, thanks for letting us be of service and help everybody, we appreciate that. We'll get the information together. Um, Richard.
Richard.
Yeah, okay.
It's for you.
And, uh, I'm not gonna cover every page of the forty-page audit report. Uh, I am gonna cover the table of contents, which is the first page end. And basically, that'll give you an idea of what's in the audit. And then I'll cover, when I'm going through the table of contents, I'll tell you which pages I'm gonna cover in detail. Which probably there about four or five pages. Okay? But on that table of contents, the first one there is the executive audit script report. On page one and seven, basically, it says that, um, you had an audit. It's in accordance to general exception audit standing there, and that these financial statements fairly present the financial statements of the video management. Okay? On page three and four there, that's the statement of net assets and the statement of activity. And that is on the full accrual basis of accounting. And y'all heard me talk over the years, that you got full accrual, modified accrual. And so those are on the full accrual, like for profit top. On page five and six, that's the balance sheet and income statement. And that's on modified accrual. And that's when you put asset there, so that's one of the ones we're gonna cover, is five and six. Because basically, you're used to looking at that during the year. That's how you budget and so forth. Okay, on page seven and eight, from the table of contents, that's the reconciliation. And basically, what it's doing is it's taking full accrual and modified accrual and balancing the two together. And your big difference there is gonna be in, uh, big cash debt and long-term debt. Then on, um, nine, ten, and eleven, does have to do with the water department. And I'm gonna cover nine and ten in detail. Um, then page twelve is a fiduciary asset. Basically, an example of that would be like the cemetery fund or something. You don't, you know, there's not a lot there, but it's not really your money. There's a board or something that's set aside to cover that. And on page thirteen or thirty-one, that's going to the financial statement. They give you in detail, they back up the balance sheet. They give you in detail the assets, liabilities, and so forth like that, debt schedule. On page thirty-two, that is, uh, the budget versus actual, uh, for governmental, or the general fund. And then if you turn to the next page, thirty-three, thirty-fourty, covers, um, I'll tell, I'll go into detail on what those are when I get to the modified accrual statements that I think you can better see. So let's go ahead and turn to page five. And, well, ago, those, those last pages I was referring to, you see that third column there that says other government, other governmental funds? Basically, anything that's in that column at the very back of the report, there's a bunch of funds that make that up. Uh, it might be special ready funds, capital project funds, and the different types of funds. And they make up other governmental funds. They didn't meet the criteria to have their own fund, like the general fund and the debt service fund. But for our analysis tonight, let's take that, uh, fourth column over the total governmental funds. And let's kinda do a comparison from last year, and then look at the differences from what last year and this year are. Okay, so far right-hand column, total governmental funds, total assets, four million, three fifty-five. And last year it was four million, thirteen thousand, which we had an increase of, um, three hundred and forty-two thousand. Well, your biggest variance is in that, is where you sold the property to Department of Transportation for nine hundred and thirty thousand, that was the increase. Uh, but then you turned around and you bought, um, some land at the industrial park, like three forty-seven. And then you did some major pay, now the gas tax funded a hundred and fifty. So that big increase, let those smaller got to back down to the three forty-two increase. On, uh, the liabilities was part of it. Liberties, uh, were two eighty-six this year. Last year they were two sixty-six, which increased nineteen thousand. This is not a huge variance, but basically what that is, when accounts payable, uh, when we were going through, we had to accrue. On the police fines, there was a few months that was owed to the state of Alabama. And so we had to calculate what they were and, um, report those. And they needed that down like twenty-three thousand, so we reported those. But basically, I think what happened there is in the transition from one employee to the other, when they realized they were specifically doing that, and it's been in the state of Alabama. So it now it's different. Okay, so that covers your assets and liabilities, and that leaves your equity section. Basically, on the equity section, I always just go to the income statement, because you've got beginning equity plus transactions of year used to entity equity. So if you go to page six there, we'll deal with that guy, the income section. Okay, and I'll be referring to the far-right column again for total governmental, governmental funds. Total revenues, five million, seventeen thousand. Last year they were four million, nine eighty-five, which that was the increase of thirty-one thousand, which I think that's not a huge increase. But there was some variance that I will point out, that had some difference. Like, in the first column taxes, um, they, let's see, they were actually down two hundred and sixty-nine thousand. And what that is, is a decrease in excise tax of a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, which that's, um, bank, and that's confirmed. And occupational taxes down a hundred and fifty-five, which is confirmed also. And then sales tax was up sixty-eight thousand. So there's your increase, the increases there. On license and permits, uh, they were up sixty-two thousand. And they had, there was a privilege license being up fifty-three thousand. The next one that had a big variance was grant. Uh, they were up a hundred and eighty-one thousand. And that, uh, is attributable to the senior center for sixty-two thousand. The fire department had a ninety-three thousand dollar grant. And lover's land was seventy-five thousand. On expenses, you say this year they totaled fourteen million, nine sixty-five. You're going, what? Because last year they were only four million, one sixteen. But basically, if you look at that column for debt service, y'all refinanced the two thousand and six, two thousand and seven bonds in this year. So if you look down from that ten million there, if you look down, one, two, three, three, why not, because you'll see that we had loan proceeds, or bond proceeds, at nine million, seven fifteen. And see, on modified accrual, you don't put, uh, the debt in the balance sheet. You just expense it, you know, when you get the money in, you report it as income. And when you pay the money out, you report it as expense. And on full accrual, you wouldn't do that. But, um, that's, that's the main difference there. So you went from fourteen million in expenses, which still were four million last year, but ten million had to do with just the debt service, the refinancing, the two thousand, sixty-two thousand, seven bond. Your next, uh, variation was on capital outlay. It was up like eight hundred ninety-two thousand. But what, what was up on land was, I've already talked about, we had done some major pay from a hundred and fifty-eight thousand. Lover's land, sixty-two thousand. A land at industrial park, three hundred and forty-seven thousand. Senior center, sixty-six thousand. And there was mowers, trucks, complete cars. And then that grant at the fire department, which they purchased two suits that were like fifty-five thousand, eight hundred, some fire suits. And then there was a lot of major work done at the park, and the pool, so forth. And then a large truck was purchased for a hundred and nineteen thousand. So that's your big difference on the capital outlay. Uh, the next item, human services, which that's gonna be your payroll, payroll taxes and everything, um, it was up a hundred and thirty-two thousand, but actually, you were under budget by fifty-seven thousand on that one. Okay, so that covers your expenses. So if you take your revenues, less your expenses, and then you've got this other financing sources down here, which has got the nine million, seven fifteen. Then you got that sale property to, uh, nine thirty-five hundred. And then you got your transfers in and out, uh, which that gives you, and that changes bond balance at three twenty-two, four forty-one, ninety-three. So that's your bottom line on modified accrual. Now, if you look at the, if we're columns there, the general fund actually had deposits of seven eighty-six, debt service fifteen thousand, and other governmental funds, four seventy-nine. But in the governmental funds, it was, um, the purchase of that land, it'd be different things there. Okay. So that gives you an overview of the income statement. So now let's look at the water, so let's go to page nine. And you've got, um, we're kinda gonna do the same thing. Uh, look at, uh, total assets, liability payment, and so forth. So total assets for the year were sixteen million, four fifteen, which last year they were sixteen million, eight oh six, which is the decrease of three hundred and ninety-one. And you gotta remember that accumulation, uh, depreciation, which is forty-four hundred and seventy-five thousand, and then sixty-one thousand assets for purchase. So that's your decrease on that up there. And your liability, uh, this year they were five million, six forty-five. Last year, five million, nine ninety-five. So, um, decrease of three forty-nine, which that's gonna be the principal paid on those nineteen ninety-eight series bonds. Okay, let's go to page ten. And this is gonna be your income statement for the water department. Uh, the revenues didn't really change. There was like a six thousand dollar difference in the revenue there. Customers stayed about the same, um, on their expenses. They did increase, last year they were a million, seven. This year they're a million, eight. Which you go back and look, you can attribute, uh, utilities, thirty-five thousand, materials and supplies, fifty thousand, which that, I think that was two repairs on, um, water line.
So you said it's a lot of stuff that's speed, areas that he cleaned up, improved, water to people.
And then, uh, repairs, nine, that's ten thousand. Which, you know, the utilities, they were up across the board. They're not just something that doesn't need, they're up everywhere on it. But they were up in the general, everywhere it sits, the water's still higher. And that was your main increases on that. Other, other was just varies, I wouldn't say over five thousand dollar increases. Under non-operating revenues, which mainly was your interest expense there, but the total of two ninety-seven, which last year that was three ten, so you increased about twelve, I mean decreased about twelve thousand. That's due to pay and obviously some principal on those bonds. And then you've got the transfers. If you look at your net transfers, you see it's three seventy-four. Last year it was two twenty-four, so that means three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. And it had to be moved into the water. And last year was two twenty-four, but you gotta remember, that's a hundred and forty-nine thousand, um, dollar increase. But remember, that was a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars worth of expense increase up there, and no increase in revenues, because that's where that comes in. So that gives you the bottom line for the year, and they made a forty-one thousand, not forty-six, forty-three. Okay, so that covered...
Tell that for my check? Yeah, by my check?
I mean, that's many...
For some of you, it ain't as funny. That's right.
Now, I mean, you know, it's just the water increases, it has increased.
Always the first thing, always the first thing, I was talking about. I can't remember, it was a lot more than...
Yeah, it was, it was a lot more.
On the first one, I was...
So it has, it has increased, um, but it's still not...
Yeah, I mean, just right here, it, we, we're not, I go with the make money and work.
No, it would be high, but we did have to subject that.
Right.
The year we came in, it was...
Yeah, that's right, because it's over me and him, in two or four years.
So it has, it's better, it's just not, like, the video still subject that. Okay, so the next thing, and you, you know, these, the statements I cover tonight is usually the ones that most, um, officials need to see, you know, when I go, there's the... Uh, the only other one that they really might like to see sometimes is budget versus actual. So would y'all like to go over that? On page thirty-two, thirty-two is the budget versus actual. Okay, and basically, you know, y'all both are under budget every year. And, um, basically, it's on the general fund. I mean, I know you do one on the water, but Gao says you gotta put the general fund in there, so it's in here. Um, but if you look, you know, your actual revenues were four million, six eighty-three. And there was budgeted three ninety, it became four, and you're like, well, that's a big difference there. But if you look at the taxes, seven million, seven seventy-seven, basically, what that is, is you only budgeted in what you were gonna need from the occupational fund, not what the occupational fund actually took in. Okay, so that's the difference there. Um, license and permits, uh, was at forty-five. But remember, we talked about the privilege license was up fifty-three thousand. The next biggest, biggest one was the interest grants and concessions, was up fifty-three thousand. You gotta remember, you took in nine hundred and thirty thousand in cash that went in, they did, plus, in the sale of that, um, building. And, um, also interest rates were a lot better in this year. The next big one is the grants, and it, that ninety-three thousand was in the fire department right there. And then under expenditures, um, budgeted three million, three oh nine, actual three million, nine thirty. But let's just kinda look at it. Under general government, sixty-two thousand dollar increase there. And we're gonna be talking about utilities, that overall utilities up thirty-two thousand. Then, um, the chamber, y'all had given some extra money to the chamber, and that was like thirteen. And then the legal fees were up because of the bond issues, fourteen thousand. Okay, that was that. And then the next large increase there is, I forgot my ruler, is culture and recreation. Was up fifty-six thousand. But they had done some renovations up there, and I went up there. Uh, supplies was up twelve thousand, utilities up there was up fifteen thousand. So you're seeing utilities go up across the board, make sure during that, you... Of course, at least with the speedy, God did get the algorithm of color packs, so you did get some, like, from that. Capital outlay, uh, of a hundred and thirty seats. Basically, all those things that I went through earlier and talked about, uh, some of them were bases, and some of them weren't. And then debt service before fifty-one, you see nothing budgeted in there. But basically, that's because that was, um, it wasn't budgeted because it comes out of the occupational place. And that's what I, I mean, if y'all have questions, we'll go over them.
Do you have any questions there?
I mean, that's just the things that I plan on covering, just based on experience. But I'll be more than happy to cover anything else that anybody wants to say, whether it be today or...
How many expenses here, that human services, what is that?
Just all your payroll and so forth, for all your departments. That's just the way that, like, Gao, or, I don't know if it's Gao, likes to have it set up, whether it be general government, public protection, and programs.
Yeah, here, I know what you got, Shane.
No, I don't.
Oh, I'm kidding.
That's a lot, that's a lot.
Yeah.
I mean, I do, I don't take a lot.
Public protection, I think, I mean, there are chances of, uh...
Public protection, that's gonna be the fire department and the police department, so expenses. But not for payroll, the payroll and so forth.
It's the past thirty-one, maybe, and, um, um, projected salary increase. That's a big variance there. And four sixty-one to seven seventy-five explains my variance that, that why.
Um, that's actually from an actuary from the state of Alabama. They have an actuary do it every year. And then I confirm it's the state of Alabama, and that's what they've projected.
And then flights, you know, for a head, right.
It's been like that for, at least ever since I've been doing this audit this last time. But it's been like that for a long time. But it's, uh, variables that they use, that their actuary uses, to try to figure out if your fund, underfunded or overfunded, or if their retirement's okay or not. It has to do with retirement, yeah.
You mind if I ask anything, Shane? What, Shane, I bet? I'm not sure we in debt right now.
I'm not sure we getting debt, okay? That will be on page, let me find it real quick. Because I mean, that is, on modified accrual, you don't really see that. But there's a page, a good, a good page that'll tell you that, and it's in the notes. So I'm looking for the page right now. Okay, it's on page twenty-four. Page twenty-four. Okay, because basically what it does, is it takes your debt at nine thirty oh six, and tells you what to do with it, nine thirty oh seven. And this should be all of it on the governmental fund. Now, your water department only has that nineteen ninety-eight series, but I'll point that out too. But anyway, um, you have the nineteen ninety-seven general obligation warrant at nine thirty oh six from five million, three thirty. Those were retired, and, um, they were redone with the two thousand and six general obligation. All right, so you see there's a zero in the nine thirty oh seven. All right, series two thousand and two general obligation, series eight, started out at three million, seven sixty-five. Those were paid off, now they're at zero. The series two thousand and two general obligation B warrant, six hundred and seventy thousand, they still exceed it, they didn't get paid off, so the six hundred and seventy thousand. All right, the series two thousand and two general obligation, hundred and fifteen, they were just paid off, so zero on that. But the two thousand and six general obligation refunding warrants, those were issued from like five million, five sixty-five. We paid a hundred and sixty-five thousand in principal, and we got a five million, four hundred thousand. On the two thousand and seven general obligation refunded warrants, of course, that started at zero, the ones that we did during this time period, four million, one fifteen, no principal to pay on those at nine thirty oh seven. So four million, one fifteen's what owed on that. Then you have to, the contracts were advanced refunds, you have to get through a population, and that's what that four ninety-three is, um, and calculate costs that had to be amortized over the life of the bond. That's what that is. Then First National Bank, uh, two million, three oh one. Each is ten thousand, the origin principal is paid, so two million, two forty-eight. First National Bank, twenty-two thousand, nine fifteen twenty-eight, that's on the top, forty-six hundred, eight, eighteen, twenty-eight. And then, uh, you have to, um, record, record leads that could happen. And so you got two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars worth of lead out there that could happen in the future years. So, um, the total for all that on the, um, governmental fund is twelve million, two forty-seven. And then if you look at the very bottom of that page, it talks about the water. That's your nineteen ninety-eight series, about five million, four twenty. And they were refunded too, so you've gotta get you in there, amortize costs. And it leaves you five million, one thirty-nine. And that's all for that.
That's impressive.
Yeah.
If I had it all was on the right-hand column, like six seventy-five, forty-four, million, one fifty, and add it all in together, that would tell me...
Yeah, the bottom line there, the total of the twelve million, two forty-seven.
This is coming out of there, right here.
You know, I wouldn't much comment on that. I used to spend some criticism of the debt that we see in prior ministrations, of the debt that was made and the things we're doing. But I want to say this, uh, if some of this is ours, that if this money had not been spent for this water and water, and I hear this, we wouldn't have it, and we wouldn't pay the show. But we endeavored our infrastructure for the island, so, I think it's my last...
This is what here evening, September thirty, two thousand and seven. I mean, this is a very significant time out here.
Anybody else? If not, Amy, thank you.
Well, thank you, that's why I wanted to start out, so now, thank you for allowing us to be of service. If you have any questions, you can see me.
Thank you, Shane. You know, we are, and it's in there, no fear, we got the proof of men, so we're gonna back there. I'm gonna make a recommendation, we proved a minute from the last meeting and our special meeting that we had. We had two meetings, so don't get emotional there. I make my, thank Shane, second. Okay, I'll pay her, okay. And, um, to pay our bills. We need to, I'm gonna make a recommendation, to pay our bills. If anybody have any comment, I'd like to get emotional there.
We have one, Gail, that we have a question on that, but the rest I will, um, kind of prove.
Well, what, what I think we, we need to do, is get you things cleared up, and then we'll go ahead and prove that, but we're gonna hold that in your eye.
Okay. While we calm down. Okay. Okay, oh, all right.
I make a motion that we approve the deals except for that, when that we got questions.
Okay, I'll say it. Okay, I'll say it. Okay. Oh, I have the bids on the police car that we talked about in the last, um, meeting. We have three bids. Logan, and Logan has got the low bid, um, for eighty-five hundred dollars. And here's a copy of the three, Bay, Hugh Carter did not bid, because they didn't have one. And then Carter had one, and Winfield, and he bid eight thousand dollars. And his has got seventy-nine thousand miles, and this was eighty-five hundred dollars, and he's got thirty-six on that. That's it. We all just put on a need buy, thank you. It's on the two bids, one is eighty-five hundred dollars for thirty-six thousand miles, one is eight thousand dollars for fifty-nine thousand miles.
Did we get our income, or we don't have to try to get on?
Uh, no, Ricky hasn't called me back, and I called him in it. I was hoping that we're gonna get somewhere around four thousand, forty-five hundred dollars, what he and I thought when we first started talking. And then we're gonna buy that old car back for about four, five hundred dollars in parts, already. Okay, that's, that's real cost.
So you're looking at a difference of about five thousand.
That's right, about that, about that, yeah. Yeah. So we have this car, this guy has a car in his hand, and we're short a car, so I'm gonna make a recommendation that we purchase this car from, like, Public Auto Sales. I'll leave that there. Thank you, Sean. Two second. I say, Shane, I'll say it.
Uh, no.
I'm not, no.
Okay, you vote, and it, you vote with my vote, okay? Okay, all right.
Yeah, and I will not break it to you.
I'm, I, I thought I voted by then, I voted by it.
This was their place in the one that they did.
Yeah, that's right. Okay.
Not only the beer, but that also hit a sign.
That's right, that's the second time that sign's been pulled out. We just got it fixed, and it's thrown down again. Well, we're gonna fix it again. And Dave, you, yeah, well, yeah, you remember who fixed that sign, Jane, you remember? Put that sign up right in front of old Brian's, the last sign?
We didn't talk about it.
We can look it up, because we, we've got a bill on it, and he did a great job on it, and we'll just lay there again. I mean, that might be, we get that early, that definitely, we get to say what we have to say. Uh... That's all I have, the machine value, I said, because, clear?
Y'all need to vote for further, all the, the, the cars.
I'll make much the three dollars. I'll say it. I'll say it. Yeah. I don't have any done yet. You gonna have any done yet? Old Dennis, new Dennis? No, I'm like, you guys can pull it, yeah? Hey, that's both. That, that?
I'll say it.
I'll say it. It's there, John.